Lincoln Hill, right? And so if you go ahead and come up here to the microphone up there and go ahead and share with us your presentation and where we've been, where we are, and where we're going.
Sounds good. Thank you. Are we official? Are we on?
Yep.
It's good to be with you all. Thank you. It's, I feel like I find a reason to be up here about once a week. Anyway, usually you welcome me kindly with the weather. Today was a little rough. I'm not sure, I mean, I know we need it, but it wasn't the best, the best welcome committee. Let me, I'm just gonna add Lincoln to the call. He wanted to be on with us for just a minute. And we, we're gonna try the speaker phone thing, but it looks like we're just gonna use this microphone. Is that what you're thinking, Micah? Okay. Hopefully he'll be able to hear us and you'll be able to hear him if I put the microphone quick.
Hi, Kerry.
Hello, Lincoln. I'm at the podium, just starting to present. So we've got the entire council here, with the exception of Councilman Hurd and Goodlander. Is that correct?
Yep.
Hi, everybody.
And Executive Zook. And Micah, of course. So, Lincoln, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna start off and Lincoln will pipe in when he's, when he sees fit. But we just wanna thank you on behalf of Lincoln Hill Partners for, for, I think, a very productive start to our experience together. We're very grateful for, for the opportunity to represent you and to serve you and, and take pride in, in what we do for Cache County. Cache County is, as I've told you before, is something that is an organization that I, has been dear to my heart for many years. I like where we are and who we are up here and just takes me back to some fond memories of, of my youth and especially my college days. So, thank you for being a part of that with me. I also want to thank you all for your participation in, in the legislative process. That's one of the things that I asked when we, when we took this on. I felt like it would be helpful if the council, in addition to the executive branch, would engage. And I'm grateful to say that throughout the legislative session, you participated very well. I really, I saw Councilman Erickson and, and Tidwell and several of you up very often. I'm really grateful for that. It always helps us as we are kind of the behind-the-scenes nuts-and-bolts people when you, when you can come in with the bat and as the, as the elected official and, and share your opinion and your sway with those legislators.
We can, we can use a bat?
Sometimes you have to use a bat. Usually, just like a horse, an apple's better than a swat, but, but once in a while, the bat is necessary. Also, thank you for your participation in UAC, in the Utah Association of Counties. As a former president of the Utah Association of Counties, I've, as I tell people that I think they might need representation up there, some of them will ask me, "Well, do we need our membership in UAC as well?" And my answer is always unequivocally, yes. There are many issues that countywide that, that are, that we can gain understanding and synergy by working together. And then, once in a while, we find a situation where we need to do something on our own. And mostly, that's on funding issues, but sometimes it's, it's other things as well. There's a policy here or there that, that we need to make sure that our specific needs are met and that we don't have the luxury of, of allowing one of the Wasatch Front counties to dictate a policy for, for one of us. And so, we had, we had a few of those last year and they will continue to come up in the future. I just wanna give a little bit of a brief overview of what we see, some of the things that we see happening as far as trends in the legislative process this year and issues that we might see, that we see coming to the table. First of all, we, it has been an interesting couple of years or several years. There has been quite a bit of, of money flowing, much of it from the federal government to the state government and then through to, to municipalities and counties. A lot of that was in the form of ARPA funding. There was a massive transportation bill, as you remember, a few years ago that passed the federal government. Those things have, have made, had kind of changed the game a little bit up there for a while. We kinda moved to a process up there in the funding realm where we, we could get funding appropriated into a larger fund and then it could be appropriated through a grant funding process of some kind, like the ARPA funding that we, that we had talked about before. We, we kinda see that changing again now. The federal money has kinda dried up. With some of the changes in Congress, we see less of that appropriated money flowing through to the states that then can be appropriated to the, to the local municipalities. In addition to that, the economy has softened, as you are probably feeling with your revenue projections as well. And so, that's both nationally and statewide. And the indications that we have heard just within the last couple of days from legislative leadership are that about, that we're about $180 million below the projected revenue, the projected revenue that was projected just a few months ago, mostly in income tax funds. So, that, that reflects on the state of the economy and people's confidence in it, mostly from what we are seeing is in tech, in the tech sector. That income tax, tax revenue is not coming in from, from the tech sector like we had hoped it would. And so, because of that, I think we're gonna see a little bit of a crunch in funding on, on appropriations from the state legislature. They're nervous. They're just a little bit on edge about how things are gonna look, as, as we all should be as we address our funding, our funding needs. So, because that federal money, that federal pass-through money has started to dwindle, we believe that there'll be less opportunity for grant funding like we've seen in the past and it's gonna be more directed towards the old, the old way. I don't know if that's the right way to say it, but the, the direct appropriations route. And frankly, that, for us, we don't, you know, we, we know how to handle both of those situations and we, we feel like we've been, we can be very successful in that appropriation game up there as well. In fact, that's actually the thing that we're the most proud of, is our ability to be able to navigate those, those situations. So, last year, for instance, we were excited and I, I've, I told you this before, I don't like to brag too much, but I think, I think we will in this particular case, that, that it was actually our team's vision and, and leadership and then actually follow-through that funded the massive transportation, rural transportation bill that, that Senator Owens was able to pass through the, through the legislature, which, which provided $40 million of, of one-time funding and $5 million of ongoing funding for rural counties. And all of that went to counties off of the Wasatch Front. We also, as you know, last year, played defense on a few issues and, and offense on a few issues as well. And as those come up, obviously, we'll, we'll continue to coordinate with you as, as those things happen. But as we move forward into the next year, what I would love to do is have a little bit more of a strategic planning session so that we know a little earlier on, we're playing a little less defense, a little more offense, if there are particular items that you see coming down the pike that are, that could be concerning or, or, or in those areas as well that we would like to be proactive on. Hi there, welcome. So, so I just want to give one slight, one little report here as far as one issue that we've been following very closely and tracking very closely. We've been asked to try and help Senator Wilson and the rest of the delegation on securing some funding for the bypass, the West Bypass, the environmental document on the West Bypass Road. We actually got some pretty good news today. We're, we're kind of running a dual track here. We're working with UDOT and within, both internally as well as looking for opportunities for funding sources in the legislative session this year to, to secure some funding for that. But several months ago, and I'm, I'm sure you all are aware of this, but several months ago, Senator Wilson and, and our team started working with Congressman Moore's office to try and secure some federal funding for that, for that project. And it's, it has been a source of a little bit of, a little bit of frustration, I would say, because as you can probably imagine, there's not a lot happening in Washington, DC right now. It's pretty, it's pretty intense and a little bit, a little bit contentious. And of course, with all funding mechanisms that are supposed to originate in the House of Representatives, the House of Representatives hasn't had a speaker for a few weeks or a few months until just recently and things have been complicated there. But they're back on board and moving forward. We just actually got, I just actually got word just a few minutes ago that, that the, a $2 million request that we had, that we had asked for from the congressman's office has been included in a budget bill that we expect will pass the House tonight. Literally, they said about scheduled for 10:15 Eastern Time tonight. Not sure, you know, if it'll be right on time, but they believe that it will stay intact in that form as it passes the House. Of course, there is going to be some, there is some risk when it goes to the Senate. We'll continue to, to shepherd that as it, as it makes its way to the Senate and then starts to, and then that reconciliation process takes place when the two budgets come together. And you can imagine, there is, there are many differing priorities for the House of Representatives versus the Senate. And with the, the presidential election in full swing, there's a lot of gamesmanship, but, but this seems to be something that's not, that's not becoming a source of contention. And so, we're hoping to do that. Now, the, the risk that we have if we play, put all our baskets, our eggs in that basket is that we become too late for appropriations from the state level this year. And I, my position is that, that we can't allow that to happen. We've almost gotta run both tracks at this point. And, and I just can't tell you how much I appreciate Senator Wilson and his, his efforts on this. We, as a, as a county, are very lucky right now to have a senator of that caliber that is moving quickly in his level of respect and, and influence in the state senate. He is, he is doing a tremendous job. And, and I'd be, and I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the others that touch Cache Valley as well, like Senator Sandals helped us tremendously as well. On this particular issue, Senator Wilson has been kind of the leader. As far as the House is concerned, we're, we're lucky that way, too. This is not a for-sure thing, but it's very likely, and I'd say highly likely, that Representative Snyder will be elected into elected leadership on Thursday, Thursday of next week, when, when the speaker officially resigns and steps down to, to run for the United States Senate. And by the way, I think it's really cool, he asks me about his visit here all the time, which makes me feel like it was time well spent. Thank you for being there with him because I do believe he's going to be our next United States Senator and it's gonna be nice to have that kind of a, you know, that kind of influence with him when we, when we get that opportunity. But anyway, so on Thursday, or Wednesday, I guess it is, Speaker Wilson will resign a week from Wednesday. Speaker Wilson will resign and leadership elections will be held for the entire, the entire group again. And I expect that Representative Snyder will be elected into elected leadership. So, we have a real opportunity here to, to have people in the right places. I, I think I may have told you this story before, but when I was in the legislature, for the whole six years, we had leadership in both bodies that was almost exclusively from Utah County. And what a frustration that was to me. It was a good learning experience because it taught me how to reach out to my other colleagues that, that may have been more aligned with my desires and mainly funding desires. And we started what we called the Northern Utah Leadership Coalition, where we, we put together a plan where we could have influence when the time was ours, but in the meantime, we would, in the meantime, we would, we would, we learned how to stick together a little bit more. The Northern Utah Chamber Coalition was formed around that same time. We figured out how to build a plan that, where a little give and take, if we saw ourselves as a little bit of a bigger region, we could be successful. And, and I think that played itself out well and allowed us to get to a time when we got some leadership from the county that I was from. And now, we're moving, we're moving north and this is gonna be another tremendous opportunity for Cache County. And the, the challenge now is going to be staying focused, staying united, making sure we have clear plans and clear goals that are, that are definable, that we can, you know, that we can take on and, and work together. And, and then, you know, using, using that opportunity that, that doesn't come very often. I, I think it's, it's one that you may not see here for a generation again. And so, I just encourage us to keep our, our foot on the pedal during this time when there's some real, some real opportunity here. So, Lincoln, do you wanna pipe in at this point? Is there anything you wanna add before I start taking questions? I know he's still on the line. Okay. Well, that's kind of a quick, I mean, it says he's still online, kind of a quick rundown.
Kerry, I have you on mute.
Okay, there you go.
I was waxing poetically, though.
Okay. Say it again.
I was, I was gonna mention, in terms of the federal opportunities that have now, to a certain extent expire just because the federal funding isn't coming in as it related to COVID, what that really does require is advanced planning before the legislative session because we're gonna have to start doing any sort of funding requests through requests for appropriations of the legislature instead of allocating, if you will, block grant funding to an agency where we then go in and make application for those grants in the spring and summertime. So, as we're looking at our future planning, now is really the time to start putting those requests and concepts together so that we can get them in front of our representatives, being Senator Wilson and Representative Snyder. And as Kerry mentioned, huge opportunity with Representative Snyder. If you kind of look out at the next year or two, Jerry Stevenson, who's the Appropriations Chair on the Senate side, is likely to retire. And I think everybody has their eye on Chris Wilson kind of stepping up into some sort of leadership role on the Appropriations Committee. So, now's really the opportunity to start putting a bunch of this together. I would suggest that we don't do it on a one-year plan, but a multi-year plan for some of those major funding opportunities that we see coming down the pike. We're obviously happy to help, but really gotta get kind of on the ball for the 24 session so that we can get those RFAs in for consideration by this year's legislature.
There are many of those that we can talk about, just to add, but, but as I said, Senator Wilson has really been focused on the transportation stuff. We can, we can talk about all of the other options, but transportation thing, I think, is, is a big one coming, coming forward, especially with the federal money drying up. Any questions for Lincoln or I before we? I mean, I can talk forever, you know that, so I'm hoping that...
I have a couple of questions. Thank you so much for being here and I, I just am so thankful that we have you, Kerry, and Lincoln Hill Partners looking out for us. I know you mentioned UAC and the value they bring and I just think it's important for us all to recognize that, that UAC is there to advocate for all of the counties and they're in a, in a tough position when it comes to advocating for any of us individually. And that's why we need you and your team to help us. So, I appreciate you guys coming in and advocating for our specific needs for our county. And I, I just wanted to, to mention a couple of those. Thanks for the update on the community project funding from Moore's office. I know we originally requested 4 million and you mentioned that, and I had heard rumblings that it might be 2 million. Do you, do you guys have any sense of what the dollar amounts are going to be for that community project funding going forward? Is, is, we asked for four, we're maybe gonna get two? Should we in the future ask for more or closer to two? Any ideas on that?
They reassured us today that, that that, you know, that they're continuing to, to keep pushing for the 4 million. They've, they've come up with 2 million as a way to make sure it stays in the, in the process at this point. That, that doesn't mean that we're stuck at that. We're hoping that, that that adjusts itself. We are also working with the, with our, with our Senate delegation as well to make sure that that stays in and hopefully can, can add more. But at the end of the day, Executive Zook, it's going to be, it's probably gonna end up being a combination of federal and state funding that we're gonna need to get this first piece kicked off. And we'll, and we'll continue to push every, every button that we can. And obviously, all I can tell you today is that right now, it's, it's, you know, as a guarantee, not a guarantee, but as, what we know right now is that it's, it's, it's in the bill and basically agreed to by the conference, by the Republican Conference, to stay in at the $2 million range. So, as you probably have learned, there are an awful lot of ups and downs in the legislative world. And my guess is that that will change before it, you know, before it stays the same.
You mentioned support from our senators and my understanding is that neither of our current US senators participate in the community project funding program. Do you know if, you mentioned Speaker Wilson running for Senator Romney's spot. Do you know if he has a position on that or if he would plan to participate in the community project funding program?
That's a good question. I don't know the answer to that. Lincoln, do you happen to know the answer to that? Did you hear that question?
I couldn't hear the question very well, Kerry.
He, he said that Senator Romney and Senator Lee do not participate in the community project funding program.
That's correct.
And, and he wanted to know if Speaker Wilson would, if he's elected. And my guess is probably that he would, but I, I mean, I don't know the answer. I mean, it's hard to tell because I'm sure right now, he's more focused on getting elected, right? But I will just say that...
Yeah, I mean, I don't wanna speak for Speaker Wilson. I will tell you, if his tenure in the legislature was any indication of how he's going to be as a US senator, I would anticipate him actively participating in the community funding process, the C, what do they call it, the CFP process. So, from that standpoint, I think that would be his natural inclination. I obviously don't wanna speak for he or his campaign on any sort of commitments he may have made there, but that would be my presumption.
Okay. Thank you very much. And then, my last question is, I've heard rumbling that there may be significant funding coming out of the next session for water projects, especially in relation to the Great Salt Lake, the Bear River Development Act and White's Valley potentially. So, I, I feel like it would be advantageous for us...
That's true.
...if such funding is going to occur.
That's there.
I think it would be advantageous for us...
We might send a news feature, am I correct?
...to have our requests in at the same time and for, for us to make sure that any water infrastructure project funding that we are seeking gets approved the same time those other projects get approved or at least gets vetted side by side with those projects. I, I know that's not directly our responsibility here at the county and we have a water district. However, it's something that's very important to our county and something that I think we need to take an active role in supporting. So, I, I just bring that up because I think we need to have some conversations with the water district and with legislative leaders to make sure that we are not left out of that funding discussion if significant funding is going to be allocated. And, and we don't necessarily need all of that funding to be allocated this session, but I, I think what needs to happen is there needs to be a plan that gets adopted and we need to be included in that plan. And if that means we don't get funding for our water projects until decades in the future, that's okay probably, as long as it's in the plan.
I think that's a wise statement, Executive Zook. In fact, I, I will, I will just answer by saying it is clear to me and I think everyone involved that this focus on water that has been very intense over the last few years and conservation and specifically, you know, the focus on the Great Salt Lake, but other water projects has, is not going away anytime soon. We feel like, obviously, we, there were a lot of steps taken last year and frankly, that's one of the things we have to be careful of because sometimes these, these things sound good on their face, right? Some of these solutions, you know, it all sounds great if it's protecting the Great Salt Lake and then you realize, oh, maybe it has a negative impact on Cache County or someone else. And so, we, that's one of the issues we fought with a little bit last year on some language we had to get changed. But the, the fact of the matter is, we've had the pressure off a little bit because of a really helpful boost from Mother Nature last year, or God Almighty, probably a better, better way of saying it. And we just don't know when, you know, what that's gonna look like in the future, but we do know that, that things, you know, we, we still live in a desert, the trends are, we're still seeing exponential growth across the Wasatch Front. The demands on water are gonna continue to be, you know, overwhelming, I think, to what we have currently done. And, you know, I've been a water dog since, you know, for years and the reality is, you know, we're, I mean, I'm gonna say this a little bit roughly, but we've been, we've been living off of our forefathers' vision when it comes to water for way too long. And it's time for us to step up and, and start looking at, at things that we can do now for the next generations. And the beauty of that is, I think we have legislative leadership who recognize that. The individual who's likely to become the next speaker, Representative Schultz out of Hooper, is very in tune with this. We've seen tremendous support from, on water projects from President Adams in the Senate as well as the entire leadership team. And, and as I said, especially in the Senate right now, I think having Senator Wilson, hopefully moving into a place where he'll have an outsized influence on that Appropriations Committee will be tremendously helpful to our, to our community as we, as we look at that in the future. And, and just to...
Kerry, if I can maybe, if I can maybe add something as well, I don't, to be honest with the budget situation we're looking at right now, I don't know if we're going to be seeing new money per se going into water projects to the same level that we have in the past. In conversations with House leadership in particular, what they are looking at doing is retooling some of the existing program, programmings, including the agricultural modernization program that they put about $50 million into that program, plus an additional $200 million went into that program for upgrades to secondary metering, based on kind of the successes they're seeing out of those programs. I know there's some interest in retooling those programs to maybe reorient what the emphasis is there. And then additionally, Speaker Schultz is very interested in kind of renegotiating the leases for the mineral lease extractors coming out of the Great Salt Lake. So, think of your Compass Minerals or some of the others that are extracting minerals out of the Great Salt Lake. They've had leases that have not changed since the 1960s and 70s and I know he's very invested in seeing ways in which they, as benefactors from mining out of the Great Salt Lake, that they should be paying a greater proportionate share for the overall health and safety of the lake. So, those will be two places that I know, in particular, the House is gonna be focusing on for additional resources into the broader water discussion that's taking place at the legislature.
And I think to Lincoln's point, a lot of that money that we saw spend over the last two years in water projects were, was exactly what we talked about before. It was, it was that ARPA funding that, that came, that was a pass-through to the states and then the states were able to appropriate it. So, we did see a big influx into that area. But even before that, I will say that, you know, the legislative leadership was finally starting to recognize that, that this was an important issue that needs to be taken on by the state, by the states. We don't really love it that way and we, we, we need to continue to try and have federal involvement, but, you know, the Bureau of Reclamation is just likely not going to get But, you know, the Bureau of Reclamation is just likely not going to get into the dam building business again, you know, and the federal government, so, or the, the water storage facility business. And, and that is a change in mindset for many of our elected leaders because the reality is, we've depended on them to create the product, projects. Of course, the local communities paid those back under the federal project. But, but they're not, they're not gonna show that kind of leadership any, at this point in the future. And so what, whatever we do is gonna have to be a state solution, and they're big numbers. They're, they're really big numbers. And so it's, it's just a matter of continuing to keep that issue on the forefront with legislators. And I, I think we're, I think, I think we were there, we're getting there slowly. I hope that this little lull in our, our snowpack, you know, with our increased snowpack, I hope that doesn't slow down our, our drive and our determination because it's a long-term solution that has to be found.
Okay, Kerry, I've got a question. Where sometimes there are issues that we have that are not a priority of UAC, and yet we wanna be supportive of UAC, and I believe you also represent UAC and us. And as we work all of that together, the last thing we wanna do is, you know, make them mad. How do we balance all of that? And are we, you know, are we best just to come directly to you? Or do we go to you and UAC and funnel everything through, or all of the above? What's the best process there?
Lincoln, I, I wanna, I'm gonna answer that partially, and then I'd like you to take that as well because it's interesting. I do not represent UAC. Lincoln does, I believe, right, Lincoln, at least partially? Is that true? Did you hear the, did you, sorry, did you hear the question?
I didn't read the question that well.
Okay, sorry. Councilman Erickson asked if with, if there's ever an, ever an issue where we're in conflict, conflict with UAC, which there will be, and there are from time to time. Does that pose any kind of a challenge for us if we represent UAC as well? And I, I just explained that I don't represent UAC, but that you have a, a small representation there. Is that correct? Do you wanna just describe that?
Yes, I do. So on the UAC side, I actually just signed a contract with the association. In that contract, I am limited to rev and tax and economic development purposes. So on the general government stuff, I don't see a ton of opportunity there would be a conflict. If ever a conflict did arise where it was something in the rev and tax space or in the economic development space, obviously, the law not only requires, but just as a part of our general course of business, we would sit down with both parties and determine how they wanted to address that conflict. Having Kerry on the team certainly helps with that because certainly Kerry can do whatever he will without any sort of conflict with UAC. But we would just sit down with you and the folks over at UAC and Brandy and figure out how best they wanted us to proceed with the conflict. At that time, if, if there wasn't a way to work through the contract, then I would have to excuse myself from, from the conversation on both sides. So that's generally how we address the conflicts.
And, and I will just, I will just say that, that those types of things come up just about every session with, with some, with clients, and, and that's a good thing. I mean, again, I think, to the best extent possible, it's always good if we collaborate with UAC, right? And, and, but there's always a time, I mean, there always comes a time in a, in a complex process like this where we have to do something different. And as long as we, you know, we're fair and we're upfront, and we, we approach things with integrity, we've, we've been successful at navigating that. And just like any other, you know, on both sides of any issue, you're gonna have opposing views. And, you know, it, I, I think it's, it's great to be collaborative to the point that you have to flex some muscle, and then we, when the time comes, we flex muscle and we, and we move forward. And, and I think that's, that's truly the, the strength of, I think, the way we have this set up at this point because, you know, we're not afraid to do that. And, and once in a while, you know, it, it might get uncomfortable for UAC. And, and I had one of those experiences last, last session. The end of the day, I think they fully respect where we ended up, even though we had, even though it, what we did drastically changed the situation. And that, that's what we need to do. And that, it's kinda like, it's kinda like having the resource of, if you, if you had a, you hired a firm, an attorney, you know, a firm to do legal work, you know, you may actually have, your attorney may not be exactly on the same page as an attorney two or three doors down the, down the hall. And we'll make sure that we wall those off and that we're strong when we need to be and collaborate when we need. I guess my point is, I don't think it's better, Councilman, if we're completely removed from UAC either. Does that make sense? We have to work with them to the extent that we possibly can. And that's why I think that it's important to, to maintain that membership and that involvement. And then, but they know fully that we'll, we'll fight them when we have to, and, and I think it brings a better result.
Okay, I know we're running just a little late here. We've got others that are on our agenda for the workshops. What other questions? Anyone else?
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Kerry.
Lincoln, I'm gonna let you go, and then, Councilman, if you don't mind, I'm gonna stick around and, and listen in on some of the budget discussions. Thank you so much for having us.
Thank you. Matt, Public Works, let us have it. Didn't you play offensive line or defensive line?
Say that again?
Did you play offensive line or defensive line, Skyview?
I played offensive line in junior high at the time, and then I played linebacker in high school.
Linebacker.
And-
I'll bring that in case these guys wanna say no.
Well, I thought maybe you were gonna touch upon Skyview losing, and then I was probably gonna lose it and start crying and then just walk out, so.
Yeah, well, they need a chance. Green Canyon, whoops.
But I, I did think my son had a good game, so I'm, I'm happy with how he did it, so. I, I don't usually use my computer, but because of another presentation in our next meeting, I wanted to get more familiar with it, so we'll see how it works. Because I figured if I'm gonna have some technical difficulties, it's better to have it now than later. I'll switch it back to this one. I don't know.
You like it?
It's caramel. Is it fudge?
This one's a fudge.
Fashion link.
Okay.
I think, uh-
It's like a maple fudge.
Amberlin?
Oh, that's-
Amberlin fudge or something like that? I think it's sugar free.
There's, I have a lot of slides prepared, so I, I don't wanna bore you guys to death with a bunch of numbers, but I do, I wanna make sure that I show you guys what Public Works is trying to do, what our budget is, kind of how we're organized. And so if you see anything, I, I did ask Jeremy Hudson, our superintendent, to come, and I also asked Jake, our Noxious Weed Supervisor, to come to try to answer your questions. So really, we're hoping that if you guys have any questions or concerns, that this gives you an opportunity, so. So I wanted to start out with just kind of recapping how Public Works is organized. And we have an admin division, we have a road division, an engineering division, and a vegetation division. If we look at all those divisions put together, that kind of shows our 2023 budget and our 2024 budget. And our total, total expenditures for Public Works for 2024 is proposed at a little over 12 million. So not, not a small chunk of change. We don't, we don't take that lightly. Some, we could talk about all those numbers on this one, but I do have other slides to kind of show kind of what those are. Any questions so far? So if we just look at how administration is broke out, there's three of us. There's myself as the director, we have Kelly as our facilities maintenance manager, and then we have an office specialist, Mallory. Kelly takes care of all of our facilities' needs out in Hiram and also in Richmond. He, he has a part-time position that's currently vacant that was approved last year, or this year, I guess. So we do have a part-time position that's not filled. But, you know, 18 months ago, we weren't sure if Kelly was gonna be able to keep up with all the cleaning, lawn mowing, fencing, repairs, so. But we do have a general labor part-time that's vacant. And just to make sure that our office specialist provides support to all divisions. So we have one secretary that tries to help all of our divisions and answer phones, help with billing and all that. So we, we don't really have a ton of office help. So for administration, I think this is something you guys see in your packets is just kind of an overall breakdown of what the administration budget is and what's proposed, so. Nothing, nothing that I wanna really point out in this one other than the numbers at the bottom and the capital investment seems to look like we're going down a lot. That's really probably pretty close to where we were this year because 75,000 of that is what we're asking for. But that extra bump includes 85,000 in ARPA. So it looks like last year we asked for a lot more capital investment than we did this year, but that's just because we got some ARPA funding. And then, again, the, the administration budget includes all the facilities' maintenance. So that's utilities, that's gas, that's water, that's anything that's required for that building. And of that 762,000, that's approximately 450,000. So that's mostly what the admin budget is for, other than some salaries and some office stuff, so. I broke these down. I have a lot of slides, again, repeating myself, but, so I don't wanna spend a ton of time on these, but if you guys have questions on them, I just wanna be there. But that's just kind of a breakdown of that personnel. So if I go back, these categories don't really paint a picture, in my opinion. I don't, we don't use these a lot. We use this for budgeting. So when we're trying to put our budgets together, we use these line items. So when I look at professional services, and I apologize because that's a little small, this line item, we're asking for 14,500, and this is how we break it out in our department for each line item and what it's for. So, you know, we have a newspaper subscription, we have some ASCE memberships, which is an engineering APWA that we pay for the group, you know, professional licensing, so. Any questions on, if we go to the next one?
I do have a question.
Okay.
Go back to travel, that's a third of that. Is that just to keep your licenses going and continuing it, or can you explain that for me?
The travel and training?
Yes.
So travel and training is training. So say our facilities maintenance guy needs to go get trained on OSHA or IMSA or how to properly disconnect equipment. We have $1,000 for him, we have $1,000 for the office manager. Say she needs some help on one of our programs, or maybe she's not super familiar with Word or Microsoft, or... That's the training. It's not necessarily directly for travel. Some departments have a travel, some have a training. Ours is together. The director to the 5,000, that would be for me. That's for, say you go to a UAPA, a UAC, a, the Engineers Conference, a USMA. So a lot of those, you do get your credits known. So if I don't go to, say, the USMA one, it's very hard to keep my licensing up for the floodplain, certified floodplain manager. You guys are going to UAC here shortly, and, you know, those conferences and hotels for a few days are getting more and more expensive, so. And then the miscellaneous consulting is if we do need some outside help to come in. Say we have some technical problems with our heating and venting or something like that, that gives everyone an option to bring miscellaneous consulting in, so.
On, on that training, is a lot of that done online, or do they have to travel someplace?
So Jeremy can speak to this, but he, he pays $4,000, and they'll, and IMSA will do online training, and that covers like 20 people. And that's a subscription that they do some of that online. The trust just came up and did some OSHA training. It were, it was in a group setting, so it's not always online. Sometimes we can find training around here. LTAP has a lot of good training that they'll do for like registered stormwater, for, you know, we've sent a lot of guys to an asphalt pavement inspection course. So there's, we could go to training. You could honestly go to training every month and spend 50,000 if you wanted. So we try to find a happy balance where our guys are still able to progress, get the licensing that they need, and still stay current with industry standards.
There are two of those we're required.
Yeah.
One which is IMSA, and there's also platter certification. We're all required to do that.
Any other questions? So again, this one's very small. I tried to highlight all the, in yellow, all the funds that go for the building. General maintenance, cleaning, pest control, janitorial, emergency generator servicing, state testing of all your water, your pressure stuff. Our gas and water is 125,000. We have to pay for an alarm subscription fee for $3,500. That's, that's a pretty big lift that's getting hit to the admin and a substantial amount of our costs. The rest of that is some office copiers. We do have department events that we, if someone's family member dies, we have a combined Public Works rodeo we put on with Logan City for cell phones. We have iPads that we use for asset management, data collection, insurance, safety equipment, uniforms. Here's our minor equipment maintenance, fleet maintenance. That's for parts for vehicles, UTVs, wash, oil, tires, et cetera. Fuel budget. This year, one of our capitalized things was to try to get the secretary a laptop computer so that she can be more mobile for some of our notes, taking meetings, and then just some maintenance tools for our facilities guy. As far as capital investments out of the admin, we have two proposed. One of them is some stairs that get us from our vehicle maintenance building. There's a loft up there that has more of a ladder. It's been difficult and hard for staff to try to carry boxes and stuff up a ladder, and it's actually dangerous. And then our facility guy is looking for a piece of equipment to help with snow removal, so. If we go to engineering, right now I serve as the county engineer. We have two staff engineers, we have a stormwater inspector, we have a approved intern, part-time position, and in this department, we're asking for a new position as the county surveyor. The total expenditures of this one looks like a lot, at 2.8 million, almost 2.9 million. The biggest jump on those line items you'll see is the personnel, and that's mostly for that county surveyor position.
Owen? Can you go back to the surveyor? Talk to me about that.
Okay.
Our budget sitting right now estimate, tell me what's going on there.
Any specific ones? I do have-
Well, I know we need a surveyor right now. We contract for it, right? I suspect you're saying we're gonna have savings on that, but at the same time, when we're looking at our budget situation, I'm hesitant, may I say that, Mike?
Okay. Yeah, so I skipped a few pages, and I, and I apologize that this is small. But if you start at the bottom, there's cog oversight, there's section corners, there's section corners, there's survey reviews, and there are engineering reviews. That survey review of 40,000 and the engineering review of 10,000 are what we pass through costs. So those are costs that if we get a subdivision plaid in, we try to charge the developer X amount of money, and then we subcontract with JUB to do that review. So that's, that's an easy one to put a number on, and it's easy to see at the end of the year. So, that's, that's an easy one to put a number on, and it's easy to see at the end of the year. Below that, you'll see section corner work, and another section corner work. That's stuff that we also contract out. That, that's being managed, the section corner work is being managed by the engineering department and the GIS department. The survey reviews are being managed by Public Works and Development Services. So, a lot of where you're gonna see some savings, Nolan, is that some of these other staff members will actually be able to do their job and be able to focus on their tasks and not wear as many hats. So, you're gonna see increased productivity in some other areas of the county. It's hard to put a direct cost to what that is, but you have a lot of other people that are managing some of that survey duties. And to have someone that's actually licensed, that can help the recorder, that can manage the section corners, that can do subdivision plat reviews, that's in-house, that actually has, that can coordinate, come to those meetings. We spend, we spend the bare minimum needed to get by. So, if we're able to have that county surveyor come to a staff meeting and a development review and discuss that subdivision and the boundary issues right with the developer, that's gonna save a lot of problems, other than the two-week turnaround time that he gets some red notes and some red lines that he doesn't understand. So, you're gonna see the benefit of that county surveyor. It's, it's hard to measure the benefits for public service that has, you know, these outside surveyors that need help, section corners, the recorder needs some help. Some of the easements that we need to write, engineering's doing a lot of that. Public Works does a lot with surveying, and so hopefully that answers your question a little bit.
I have a question, Matt. The, um, so the, the surveyor's salary, is that already included in the budget that we have?
Correct.
And so-
In the proposed budget, yes.
In the proposed budget. Will that decrease some of those other line items? Like, have, has there been any kind of a, um, amendment made to some of those other things that the surveyor will now do? You know what I'm saying, for twenty-twenty-four?
There, there should, we should see some savings, yes. But, uh, until we have that person in our staff and we can see how overloaded he's gonna be and where his focus is, he still may need to send a few of those out. He might still need some of those extra resources until he's able to come up to speed and, and comfortable with where we are. For the first year, you might see a s- a smaller amount of savings than in, say, your second year.
All these things that you say this, this survey will do, will do, or should do. And yet, we're contracting out, right, those services? Are we not contracting out enough of them, or just what's, it's not getting done efficient-wise? What, what are the people that are co- being contracted to do, not doing, to cover this?
They're doing the bare minimum required to get us through our processes. So, if we have a subdivision come in, are they looking to see how that works with our code? Are they seeing how that looks with the property that's developed next door? Are they seeing? I, I think the state code wants every subdivision plat in Cache County, not only in, in the unincorporated area, to come through the county surveyor so that we can see that we're getting consistent references to monuments. So, there's, the current contracted guy, and Stephen might be able to answer a little bit more. But generally, he's just looking to make sure that the plat itself meets code and that there's generally, the boundary is, closes.
Okay, next question is how much of that personnel expenditure there, that you have, how much of that is to go to surveyor? Have you got that broken down specifically for that surveyor?
So, you could probably see at the top line, by the time you pay for salary, benefits, and everything else, you're probably really close to that hundred-and-seventy-three, David. On the very top line.
Yeah. So, the, that percent change is basically the current plus, that's, the seven-hundred-and-seventy-three is the change?
Yes. Hundred-and-seventy-three is the change over last year. And assuming the, the rest of the staff has been the same, that would, that's pretty much showing you what that extra surveyor is gonna cost to the county. And, and again, you know, as my pitch to encourage you guys to hire this person, I think a lot of what that person can do for the county and having a full-time staff is gonna be very hard to put a number on, to, to show a savings or to show an expenditure. But customer service, to be able to respond to other departments and those types of things, uh, that we are not necessarily getting. And right now, we have two surveyors. One of them that helps Development Services, one of them that helps basically Engineering. One of them does a lot of the field labor and the work. And, and that cost is not, that cost is up here in, about in the middle under Professional and Technical, where it says Engineering. And then right below that, it says Surveying, it's right in the middle of those budgets. So, right there, you'll see Engineering Reviews and Survey Reviews, but above that, you'll see a hundred-and-twenty-thousand for Engineering and the fifty-thousand for Surveying. That's, that's another cost, right? If we have an in-house guy that can perform some of that survey work, that fifty-thousand dollars will go down. So, I've showed you about fif- almost a hundred-thousand dollars of stuff that we have budgeted to pay survey work. So, eh, now, does he come in the first year and save us all that hundred-thousand? I, I would say probably not, right? He's gonna be very busy, he's probably not gonna be able to get all the office work done and all the field work done, so. I, just being honest, I don't know how much he will save us the first year. But I would say it would, at least half that would be very easy to save. But if you ask staff and you ask people that are in Development Services and Public Works, everyone wants this person because they know what that, what a valuable tool to have that professional licensing would be, to have someone in the county that can help us with those things. And by state code, we're required to maintain all those monuments, so. That's how all the land is governed, and descriptions and deeds and all that stuff are tied to the section corners, and it's the county's job to maintain all those. There is some legislation that allows us to put in another ordinance that we can collect more money to help with those, but we haven't put that in place yet. But I don't think that's gonna cover his salary, but it might generate, you know, another fifteen to twenty-thousand dollars a year that would help that department as well.
As far as just fees?
What's that?
As far as fees go, or percentage tax?
Yeah, so if anyone's doing any work around a section corner, they have to come in and pay a fee. There's been a few, again, I'm taking time away from Stephen and other departments, but if you, anytime you come within so many feet of a monument, you have to pay a permit fee. And some of these fiber optic companies have paid two-hundred-thousand because they'll run fiber optic down the road, and they pass like thirty-five monuments, so. But, so, so I'm not, not saying that's gonna generate enough to cover the guy, but there is between recording the surveys and managing the surveys that come in from the other surveyors that we've charged fees for. And, you know, Development Services charges a fee for reviewing plats. And with the new subdivision code, that time that we have to review those, get red lines back, is of, gonna be of utmost importance. And if we're trying to delegate that and do that out externally, and we don't have a lot of control over the consultant, that's gonna make it harder for us to get our subdivisions turned, turned around in a timely fashion as well.
Matt, question for you. You keep saying he, the guy, do you already have somebody in mind to put in as a?
No. No, he, she, or, probably not it, but, yeah. No, we, we do not. Amy and I have been drafting that, we've, we're pretty close to having, um, uh, job description that can be approved. Uh, what, what we're basing that, um, cost off right now is general consensus amongst the other people, other counties. Amy's done kind of a, a reach to see what each county is paying their surveyor, how they're contracting that. And we feel like that we have enough to offer that as a very high-level type position that has some experience. 'Cause we wanna make sure we, we don't hire someone that just came out of school, that can't, that doesn't have the experience. We wanna hire someone that can come in, can help the county, has great experience, and hire them at a high level, so.
Thank you.
Any more questions on engineering? I, I did wanna point out in this one, that of that two-point-nine million dollars that we saw, almost two million of that is passed through. So, engineering is the division that will take cog money, RAPS money, any of those other funds. And that's where the money gets passed through. So, the engineering budget always looks like a lot, but that's because if it looks like a lot, that means we're doing a good job getting grants and funding in some of our, uh, other projects. So, almost two million of that's passed through. So, really, that budget's, you know, only a nine-hundred-and-forty-thousand. And then, some of those engineering fees that you see, we need those engineering fees to pay match amounts, so. It doesn't, it's not free to get that two-million dollars. Usually, you have to pay some kind of a ten percent, seven percent match, and you're doing engineering work to get those plans done, so. Vegetation, so, just kind of structure here. Jake has, uh, two full-time guys, um, he has Alex and he has Dakota. And one of the things Jake is asking for, or at least Public Works is asking for, is another new position for an operation assistant. And, and I, if Jake wants to, he can come up and talk more about it if I don't do a great job. But right now, he doesn't have anyone that's directly over canals. So, his canal contracts with Logan City and others, which, which Mark would be somewhat familiar with, that's what Jake's trying to hire for. Jake's been trying to do double duty for that this year. That, there used to be three full-time people there, some of those people got moved out a while back. And Jake's asking for that new position. And he's willing to get rid of a couple of seasonals, but typically, the seasonals have been around thirteen. And then they're just kinda spread out, depending upon their skills to go underneath them.
Who positions should then poss- should be about paid for with revenue from those canal companies, right?
Correct, as well as what Logan City pays them for.
Yep.
So, this is the overall big picture for vegetation. Uh, compared, you can see a little bit of change there in the personnel. You can see some professional services, and Jake runs a very lean budget. Here's his full, here's his information for his personnel. Professional services, here's Jake's travel and training, right? Thousand dollars for Jake to go to a conference, he's trying to split twenty-four-hundred dollars for four people. And for a couple of his LTAP, a lot of times, they have to be required to do flagging, safety training. And then, most of those guys are pretty much required to go to the weed, the Utah Weed Control Association, stuff for training and just coordination, so. Pretty, pretty lean budget for the training. But I, I would say Jake gets a lot of good free training, where a lot of these state agencies will actually pay for Jake to come to training, which helps too, so. Super small, again, I just, if you can read some of those, if you can't. But just kind of, that's how we break it down, right? Each line item, we break down what we need, what it's for, and we look at each line item and then put all those together. So, for medical, for onboarding, office supplies, what they think they're gonna need for fuel, communications, cost of spray, so some of Jake's big numbers, he has to go buy all the chemicals, so those are some of the bigger numbers in here, so. Of that two-sixty-one, a hundred-and-eighty-thousand of that is just chemical, so your weed killer, so. Minor equipment, ma- maintenance and some capital investment, so. One of the things that, uh, if we went back to Jake's original one, one of the things that's up for Jake a little bit is his two-thousand-and-twenty-four request for capital investment. And that comes back to here for a one-ton truck, hydro cedar, and two Kubotas, so. Um, I know there's some budget amendments, and one of the budget amendments is that there was a, issue with Jake's budget and what, and his request for full-time person, person got left off or a partial left off, so. What we're showing you is what was passed through to you guys, but the, the budget amendment would correct that and make the numbers correct in, in Jake's budget. Anything I left out, Jake, or anything you wanna highlight?
No, I think you did.
Do you have any questions?
Trying, trying to move along quick, this is the road division, so, just trying to give a little breakdown. Right now, we have Jeremy as the road superintendent. Uh, right now, we have a foreman position that's vacant, and we have four crew leads. And then underneath that, there's all of our equipment operators, one and two. I couldn't fit all of them on this chart without making it so small. But essentially, we have twenty full-time positions. Right now, currently approved is two part-time, and depending upon the year, we usually have budget for twelve to fourteen seasonals. We've noticed that part-time labor is very hard in the road division because you're limited to thirty hours a week. So, when you work four-tens, or when you need someone to jump in and run a snowplow, it's very hard to have someone that's dependable, that can be there, that can only work thirty hours. As soon as they, you know, you're doing shipping in the summer, that might be fifty hours, sixty hours a week. And if you have someone that's part of your crew that needs to run the roller, and then they gotta leave halfway through the week, it, it just doesn't work very good. And then you're always trying to manage them, and if you go over thirty hours, then HR gets mad at us and wants to pay him benefits, and we, we've had a few run-ins with that, so. What we're proposing for the road division is to trade two part, the two part-time guys in for one full-time. And that will be a big help for us during the winter season to have enough staff to make sure we get the roads plowed. And this year, we, we actually need to help with the airport. We have a contract with the airport to help the airport, and that's gonna take a couple other staff members away as well, so.
Does the airport demand priority coverage as far as snow removal, or is county roads come first? How does that work?
That's why we ha- need extra staff, is because we, the airport has some certain timeframes of when they need to get things plowed and cleaned, and we also have priorities in the roads, so. Where we've had a few people that could rotate in for sicknesses, or when someone takes a day off, uh, this year, we'll probably be running pretty lean, and most of those people will be working, so. It's, it's gonna be a challenge, and we just hope that everyone stays healthy and doesn't take a lot of vacation, Nolan. But you have Jeremy that's gonna be trained to do stuff at the airport. Even myself, I'm trained and can help in the airport. So, we have upper-level staff that can jump in and help if we get in a real crisis situation. And that airport contract is paying us for time and, time and materials, basically. So, if we spend time over there, we'll get paid per hour for that time. Where some of our city contracts is more of a per mile or those types of rates, instead of a hourly rate, so. Total expenditures, seven-point-five million is the proposed budget for twenty-twenty-four. It looks like last year for capital investment, we've gone way down. That seemed like the big-ticket item that was changed a lot. Uh, that's for seven-hundred-and-forty-thousand, last year was for funding and for some one-time funding for capital improvements, and also money for flood mitigation from the state. So, we didn't really reduce our capital investment. Most of our budget line items have stayed almost straight across, dead even, so. As you can see, most of our big expenses, right here, two, two million of our seven million is just for personnel. And you notice that there, in the proposed budget, there's no line item for part-time employees. Professional services, again, this is subscriptions, pay for our SAM's card, Costco card, some professional memberships, MSHA training, LTAP training, that's flagger training and pit safety training. That, those two combined for the 8,000. That's pretty hard numbers. It's hard to get around anything less than that because those are mandated. You have professional conferences for 20 people. And then this is if we need something for our pits that's maybe not really related. Survey. We have some bridge experts that come in and help with some of our maintenance plans. About 10 grands there for that. And then the city works, money is for the new software to manage our fleet and to manage our assets. So that's the software. Super small, I realized that again. Just trying to see how we do it, right? We have some office, office expenses. Pays for water, ice, for field crews. We have our fuel at 325. Lot of cell phones, a lot of iPads. But this is where you're going to see your road maintenance, your materials, your cattle guards, your guard drills, your pit maintenance, your bridge maintenance. And this is the bread and butter is the supplies and services. Your chipping, your chipping oil, your dust control, your, but that's really where the bread and butter of the road is, is in the supplies and other services.
We just pulled a lot of that stuff in now, select our gate, our capital, we built ourselves now to try to save and get more out of it. But we actually build them in-house in the winter.
Here's your road salt, asphalt, concrete, road painting, pipe drainage, uniforms, insurance. So these two are all on the same under supplies and services, two full line items of stuff that's all tried to break out. You know, if it's asphalt, it's, it is what it is. We don't have a line item to the side. But if we're trying to figure out, you know, what it's for, we usually will put some notes on the side of all of our line items. And this is almost $3 million. So if you have 2 million in wages, you have almost 3 million in these types of actual road maintenance type stuff. You're, you're getting up there to close to your budget. We've been spending around $700,000 just as capital improvements for equipment. That's either getting rid of plows, buying new plows, getting rid of graders, just kind of over the last probably four to five years, if I'm not mistaken. That's been about the budget is that 700,000 mark. So, but this is for smaller minor equipment maintenance. The capital investment is right here. So what you'll see on this one is, like I said, most of what we're trying to do for fleets and stuff, for our fleet is around 700. We have two projects in here. One is Birch Canyon, one is Estancia Lane. That's an extra 500,000. Those are actually what we would consider capital improvements. Birch Canyon is the erosion protection and Birch, and Estancia is actually reconstructing a road that's pretty much gone. So the bottom one is the transfer out. That's debt services. That's 803 is pay back our loan for our facility. That's, that's all. So if I, you're all still awake, so that's a good thing.
I have one question. I didn't see anywhere where pilt was this revenue.
So, so on this, I didn't focus on any revenue. I wanted to show you guys what our proposal was and what our expenditures are. The, if we've, I think revenue is a whole nother discussion. Because you have, so I, I thought about bringing some revenue stuff in, but that would be a whole nother 45-minute presentation. But I could bring that up quick and scroll through it.
You've also got contracts that were cities contract with you.
Yep.
All that, all those other things.
So.
That offsets some of this except for.
Yeah, what is, do you have a ballpark amount of what it doesn't offset?
The pilt or which?
Oh.
All of your revenues.
All the revenues.
It depends on year to year, what you have. And it depends on whether you're lumping vegetation and engineering and admin and all those together. Or if you just focus on roads, then that's why, that's why I'm saying that's a whole nother budget workshop to just go over revenue line items. I do, I do have, I can pull it this quick, but I don't want to take any more of Stephen's time. But if you look at, now it's gone. You still have, I still have control over my screen? I went into the wrong one.
Click there and type, display. Display.
Can't see where it's typed, no.
S P. Cate or extend and duplicate, top one, duplicate. Into key.
So if I look at this spreadsheet and you just scroll through, you have, these are your revenue line items. You have sales and use tax, you have sales tax, transportation, franchise tax, business license, zoning subdivision. Most of these green ones in here are pretty much public works. So if I scroll out and you start looking at all the green ones, that's all going to be stuff that's directly related to public works in some fashion. The yellow ones are probably split between development services. That might be some kind of a grant from the state where public works got some money and development services got money for trail. And the blue is going to be strictly development services type funding. So if you start trying to dive into those and find out where that's coming from and how much money that equals and trying to split the pots that are combined together, that, it's a whole nother meeting. There, mostly there's your taxes. So if you want to know where you're getting money from taxes for municipal services, and I don't have 2024 numbers in here, but that's your tax revenue for.
Okay, other questions? Stephen's going to have to condense a 30-minute presentation into 10. You can do it, you can do it. You can do it.
Thank you, Mal.
You're welcome. Appreciate it. Well, he's getting set up, Micah. Who do we, what departments matter do we still need to listen to or have presentations?
A lot. From the other elected offices, assessor, recorder.
Oh, I am extended, let me, I can get it. I actually prefer.
There's some smaller departments from within the executive, like library, senior center. I'll have to put together a full list.
Okay.
I think we start from most of the big ones.
Okay.
Okay, good afternoon. As you've pointed out, I'm on a little bit short time, so I'll try to go through this quickly. The first thing I just want to do is I want to start out with one of my favorite quotes about budgeting and planning that I heard during school is that the budget is the most important plan of any government because it is the plan through which all other plans are accomplished. So essentially as we looked at our budget, what we wanted to do is look at what are our duties? How are we being held accountable to our citizens? And what projects or plans do we want to accomplish and the funds that would take to accomplish it? And so just a quick rundown, this is the development services department. So we have development services, the administration. So I'd be myself, our code enforcement and some receptionist work that we have. We have our planning, which is, which encompasses our trails, but also a lot of our land use application review and our county-wide planning program. We have our building division, which is building inspectors. And we have a building tech, our building permit tech that reviews permits and helps keep those organized. We also have our GIS department. So one thing that's unique about my department is that our trail, our GIS division is within the general fund. And this year we're proposing to move the trails into the general fund while the rest are in the municipal services. So we'll go through a couple of things real quick. So we'll highlight a few things. I'm, so the first, one of our first goals is obviously to be responsible stewards of the public's money and resources. We also want to fulfill our duties, both legal and mandated by the council. We also want to help implement the general plan. And then we also have other projects that we work on, like meeting our legal requirements or updated codes, keeping up with projects from the county council or executive. And then we also overall just want to help keep Cache County a great community. So a couple of the highlights that we'll talk about is we have a new, we're recommending that we have a new GIS staff member. We are eliminating a part-time employee position within the planning division. We're going to eliminate a couple of vehicles. We are reexamining how to purchase building inspector trucks. We'll talk a little bit about long-term goals and budget health and also raising fees for services. So the first one, and we'll go, we'll, I have sheets that cover the full division's budgets. But the first one I want to talk about, this is the really big new ask, is that we are needing a new employee within the GIS department. We're anticipating the wage to be around 50,000. The GIS division was a four-person team in the past. The position was vacated a couple of years ago and it was never, the fulfilling that position was delayed. They felt like they could get by with the three members, our three employees that we have. However, they are starting to not feel that way anymore. If many of you are familiar with the GIS services, they do all of our digital mapping. So they do all the mapping and import the data from the recorder's office, the accessor's office, the planning division, public works. But they also do a lot of the work for smaller cities around the county. Actually, most cities, except for Logan and soon Smithfield, most of the other cities don't have any GIS capabilities and we help them with those services, which we do charge them for. And we potentially might want to look at those contracts and that's something I have on a later slide to look at. The other personnel thing is that we have, we have a part-time, we always had a, we've had a part-time planner in the budgeted for the planning division. However, we're recommending eliminating that position this year. Next is vehicles. So the development services, code enforcement and planning and GIS, we share a total of five vehicles. However, we did an inventory of when they're being checked out, when they're being used. And we found that at most only three were ever used at the same time over the past six months. And so what we'd want to do is just eliminate two vehicles. We just don't need them. These aren't huge savings since they are leases. Over the long term, it'll be larger, it'll be large savings, but each of them are a few thousand bucks a year. And so eliminate, but we would like to eliminate two of those. The other big change, which you'll probably see as part of our recommended budget cuts, was reevaluating how we've handled our truck purchasing within our building department, our building division. Essentially what we used to do is we'd buy brand-new trucks every year and trade in the old ones. We were able to buy these trucks brand-new under the state contract for about the same price as it would take to, about the same price that we're buying new ones. So our building inspectors always had brand-new trucks and it was not costing anything. And there's even occasionally where we would trade it in for more. However, since COVID has happened, that's no longer been the case. Truck costs have, became more expensive year over year. And our trade-in hasn't been as competitive as it used to be. So what we're recommending is we're eliminating it down to a smaller number. Normally it's been around 250 to 300,000 for those trucks. We're recommending somewhere between 150 to 200, depending on what budget cut you're looking at. So that way we can reevaluate how we're rotating trucks in and out. After talking to public works, they put theirs on, and Matt can correct me a little bit, but they, a lot of times they try to, they look more at mileage than at year over year. And also by being a little bit more proactive and talking to dealers well ahead of time, they're able to get a little bit better deals. So that's something that we want to do to ensure we still have good working vehicles, but we're not just buying new trucks every year, just to buy new trucks every year, yeah.
Stephen, I have a question and this is, shows my ignorance of this, but with these trucks, do you carry equipment in those trucks? Or would you be able to get by with a smaller, you know, not necessarily a truck, but another vehicle?
Yeah, so a lot of building departments do get, have smaller trucks typically. We've had larger trucks in the past and there's been a couple of reasons for that. And it may be something we could part, add as part of our reevaluation. A lot of times there are tools or equipment that they carry in the back, particularly like ladders. They don't carry a bunch of construction equipment, but occasionally they need ladders to access things higher to, for review. The other item that is important, the other item, one of the reasons why I bought bigger trucks is oftentimes they're going up into the canyons and mountains to inspect cabins where sometimes the road and access isn't great. And so having a little bit larger truck ensures that they're going to be able to access the locations that they've needed. However, that is, when reviewing our building permits, about 90% of the building permits that our building inspectors review are within different municipalities that we contract with. And with those, we don't need such large vehicles to access. And we could potentially downgrade to either a smaller truck. Or I know a lot of cities have moved to like those Ford Mavericks that are smaller, but they still have a bed. But we still would want a couple of larger trucks on hand just in case we are for the inspections that take place up in the canyons or sites that are not easily accessible. And so that's part of the review process. We want to look at the different vehicles that we have and figure out what's the best value we can get.
Okay, thank you.
So the other item that we want to talk, that I would like to talk about is raising fees. And so right now we charge fees for services. If somebody brings in a land use application, we charge them a fee for the time that it takes to review. The reason for that is we don't want the residents as a whole to pay for somebody, to subsidize somebody building on their property, essentially. However, that being said, right now our fees for the planning division have not been raised in several years. And based on the workload and hours that are spent, that are spent reviewing applications, for most fees we're likely not charging enough. And so we're currently, we have, at the end, I have some proposed draft fees that are currently being reviewed by finance for their input as well. However, I do think that is something that we need to do, yeah.
So I'm looking at this and I'm thinking on our code enforcement officer, how many infractions does our code enforcement guy find a year?
So we have sent out this, this year, really it's been the last couple of months that we've, that we've sent out some final notices and have started billing fees out. The first, before I was here, I don't know of any time that they've done that.
That's where I'd like to see fees go up because citizens who come in and pay the fees are doing the right thing. Our code enforcement officer is finding people who aren't doing it. And we ought to be raising and hitting the fees to those who are not following program, so.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that. We're actually, it's on our plan this winter to reevaluate our fee structure for code enforcement and bring in a proposed amendment to our code to allow easier ability to access those fines.
Well, I don't know what brings you more in compliance than a stiff penalty.
Yep, I would agree. I mean, if we have a stiff penalty and an efficient way to levy that penalty, it makes our code enforcement officer's job a lot, a lot easier. And people are much more willing to come into compliance because they know the county has some teeth behind the letters. That's been part of the problem in the past is that the county has sent out letters and has never actually collected. There is one letter that I started. He's been gaining fees over the course of like two years, but the county never billed him, never took him to court over it. And so after talking to our attorney's office, we've kind of reset that and started, gave him like, hey, look, we obviously never collected on these or acted on this, but we're starting again today and now you have to come into compliance. And with kind of the new threat and showing him how we are going to collect on him, he is now, the property owner is now taking action and steps to. collect on him, he is now, the property owner is now taking action and steps to clean up his property. And so as of yet, we haven't had to levy fees against him as long as he's still continues to comply with his cleanup schedule, but he's submitted to us.
Well, we're not slow in charging fees for application, but we're slow in applying fees for penalties or non-compliance. I think we ought to be quicker about that.
Okay, yeah, and I I would agree with you. So the other item with fees is our GIS department, as I mentioned, does a bunch of does a bunch of services for surrounding cities. I can get to some of those in just a minute, but we're looking at raising those. So I'm almost out of time, so we'll go through the numbers really quick. So this has been the proposed budgets over the last couple of years. In order to make them easier seeing, I put them in graphs, so you can see the two thousand one, two thousand, or excuse me, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. As you can see, for the most departments this year, we are asking for less. Some of this has to do, like some of the big drops in development services and trails mostly comes because of grant opportunities that we had last year that aren't quite as significant this year. Or for instance, we got a couple of million dollars in grants for trails last year, and we're rolling over about five hundred thousand into this year's budget for trails to continue those grants, because we started on them, but we haven't been able to spend everything out of them yet. And so that's part of the drops, but some of the other drops that you see, like between developments or planning and building, those have been cuts that we're looking at to training, employment and vehicles.
Didn't you say you were talking to moving trails to the municipal services?
Yep.
From municipal services to general.
Correct. Yeah, so from municipal services into general. And the reason for that is our trails department provides services that impacts everyone in the county. Where like our planning typically, most of their work, other than our countywide planning, it's oriented towards just those living in unincorporated areas. Our trails department will help with trails that are within municipalities or that are outside of municipalities. For instance, we received a grant for, to build a trail along eight hundred west, west that will go along some unincorporated county property, Nibley City, Logan City and Millville. And so the county is taking lead on that and managing the project, but that's all being supported through grant funding. And so that's why that, we felt like that belonged more in the general fund because it has a broader impact to those living within and with, in and outside of unincorporated areas within the county. So we'll go through, so just a couple of quick things. So with development services, a couple of things that I've highlighted is travel and seminars. We are proposing to cut that down to closer amount to the, to the conferences that we actually, and trainings that we feel like are important. Our non-capitalized equipment, that's where we're proposing cutting some vehicle costs. And then our software, you can see last year that was three thousand fifty-nine. That was all based off a grant to get initial purchase of some application software, and the fifty-five thousand is continuance of that software, and that is that is being paid for by ARPA over the next three years. For planning, you can see we eliminated a part-time employee. We're also looking at cutting some of our travel seminars and training costs from this last year. And then we also have our technical training. We, most of that was funded through grants last year. If you've seen those housing videos, those were paid for out of that, this fund through grant opportunities and also some of our general, wrapping up our general plan as well. Building as our building department, our building division, they actually run a really tight budget. When we were going through looking for cuts, there was, they utilize most of the funds that are being budgeted. However, it's the capital equipment, which is the vehicle purchases that we're looking at reevaluating. Trails, like I said, most of these are funded by grants that positions themselves. A big chunk of it comes from RAPS. And the other, and surrounding municipalities, the county does chip in. For instance, this past year, we chipped in fifteen thousand for the two employees that we have, while the rest was paid for RAPS in other cities. And so I feel like we get a pretty good deal for the work that they do. A couple of other things, I should have highlighted this, but the professional and technical that is up, that's not proposed right now to be funded by grants, but that is forty thousand that we want to have in store to match grant opportunities or to hire consultants to help with projects. So if a grant comes up that we can say, hey, look, we have a pot of money that we can say, here, we can do a five percent match for this project. And then down at the bottom, the five hundred thousand to roll over. So GIS, the, we're looking at eliminating five hundred dollars out of their education and training because all that goes into, they do it in their travel expenses when they go to their annual conference. And then we also have budgeted for, for one more employee. So a couple of the things I wanted to bring up is our long-term health. This is something that I'm concerned about with the municipal services fund, as I know all of you are. So part of that is moving trails into the general fund. We also are going to look at countywide planning to see if that's possible. There are some provisions of state code that I think that'll be a little bit more tricky. Also raising fees for services, and we also want to look at ways we can cut some cost. So this is what this year, what our current revenues are versus what we've spent compared to what our budget is. So as you can see, and this is through October, we've had a couple of expenses since mid-October that don't reflect on this table, that would bring both of those up, like we traded in some vehicles and bought some vehicles that would add to that. But as you can see, we are probably, for revenue-wise, we're probably not on track to meet what we budgeted. But expense-wise, we are likely not going to spend everything that we budgeted and will, this year, the will likely come out under from what we gained, which is really important. However, that has not been a consistent pattern, and some of this has been offset by grant opportunities that we've received for cost and expenses, and those are great, and I'm really happy for those, but I believe this deserves some more consideration in the future and something that we're going to really need to look at over the next couple, next, next year for sure, that we'll want to come in with a more strategic plan. And some of that would involve some of these fees. So these are the fees that we've collected over the last couple of years for different services. So business licenses, you can see that has been dropping, zoning and subdivisions. There's actually an error in one of the accounts that just needs to be fixed. So for twenty twenty-three, it doesn't show properly. For building permits, though, you can see that we are on track to be, are we received more revenue thus far than we've received the last couple of years, and that same with plan check fees, which is part of our building permit fee service. And so this is our countywide planning services. These are the fees that different cities pay into those services. So you can see for GIS, trails and planning, the county receives just under a hundred thousand at ninety-three, one fifty. But when you look at like the services that GIS provides for some of these services, that's in the second to last column. Some of these cities like Nibley and North Logan, we provide full services. I mean, we map their utility lines, we do their zoning line, zoning maps, we do.
Not charging enough.
We're not charging enough for those services. Typically, a GIS employee would cost the city, you know, fifty thousand a year for just their wage, plus the extra fifteen for benefits, plus about another fifteen thousand just for the software, plus a couple thousand for all the hardware that it takes to run it. And the county, there is some, there is some sufficient, there, there is some efficiencies because we have a lot of that stuff already in place, so it doesn't cost us quite the same. However, for the full services and mapping that we're providing, we're not charging enough. And this is something I've talked with our division head. And we, we think we're, we're going to do some evaluation and look at raising those fees. And then this is our land use application fees. This is, like I said, based, we, our current fee schedule is on the second column. And then we have some proposed fees and what that increase would be. Mostly, it comes in zoning clearances. This is still draft form. However, I wanted mostly to present this that we're taking a look at it. We're reviewing what other counties charge for similar services and also local municipalities like Logan and Nibley and Smithfield for similar reviews to ensure that we're in line with what others are charging, but also wanting to take account of what actually costs us. So I know I'm like fifteen minutes over. Are there any questions?
I, I'd just say, Stephen, you're doing a great job. Meeting what we need to do to order to get costs down and still provide efficiencies. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so yes, we're doing a good job, but I also hear that as citizens come in, like a home permit or whatever, that they're coming back and forth into the office. And so if we're going to raise fees, I hope we have a streamline and a checklist that makes it easy for our citizens to understand, to come in and say, I know this, I know this, I know this, rather than coming in and saying, well, you didn't tell me this.
Yeah.
Another fee.
And.
I think we can offset the pain for the citizens if we streamline that, checklist it, and say, okay, here's the fees, I understand the fees, but just, they walk out, they know exactly what they got to do, rather than a surprise coming back in.
Yeah, I completely agree. That's been a huge problem ever since I started, and it continues to be. We've taken a few steps. And we're issuing more zoning clearances now than at a higher and faster rate than we were when I got, when I started, where we were only issuing one or two. Now we're issuing some normally between five and eight, and help with some of the backlog where we're getting normally a couple in each week. And so I feel like we are making steps forward, but that is still a large problem where a lot of the residents that are applying for zoning clearance, I mean, they've never done this before. They likely will never do it again, especially after dealing with the county. And so we want to make this service mostly as accessible and helpful as possible to these residents. So I completely agree, and it's something that we're working on. And we have made some changes, and I'd be happy to go through those. And we have some other changes that are planned.
Thank you. Please check with the fees on non-compliance on our enforcement officer.
Thanks, Stephen.
Appreciate that. Let's take a little bit of a break here.